And then, uh, we'll go from there, alright?
Alright.
So, first person, uh, John Gothier.
Present.
Art Haco. Leon Johnson. I see Leon. Jackie Kelly.
He muted himself. Yes, Ja- Jackie Kelly's here.
Fran Kenny.
Yes.
Ed Laterno.
Here.
John McDonald.
Here.
Mike Munson.
Here.
Ken Swirad.
Here.
Todd Secleary.
Here.
Dane Whitman.
Here.
Looks like we have everyone in attendance except Art.
Fran Kenny.
I'm here.
Katie Twain is here.
Is he? I don't see him.
He's on the phone. Uh, also, it looks like, uh, uh, Catamount TV is with us, uh, as well as, uh, the Bennington Banner. So, welcome. Uh, I'd like to start the meeting with, uh, with public comments. Are there any public comments today? Okay, hearing no public comments, we're gonna move on to the first item of the agenda, uh, which is the election of officers. Before we do that, however, um, I would like to do introduction of board members, uh, for the reorganization meeting, uh, for those that are, uh, that are not giving attention or watching our meeting recorded. Uh, I'm gonna start with, uh, John Gothier, if you could just state your name and what town you represent, that'd be great. So, John?
Uh, John Gothier, North Bennington.
Uh, Leon?
Leon Johnson, North Bennington.
Jackie?
Uh, Jackie Kelly, uh, Bennington.
Fran Kenny?
Um, Shasberry.
Ed Laterno?
Bennington.
Uh, John McDonald?
Bennington.
Mike Munson?
Mike Munson, Shasberry.
Ken Swirad?
Bennington.
Todd Secleary?
Todd Secleary, Bennington.
And Dane Whitman?
Uh, North Bennington.
Alright, thank you, everybody. Um, also, uh, with us today, uh, on the call is, I don't wanna miss anybody, is Nicole Sauer, uh, our Community and Outreach Coordinator, uh, Rob Bonney, who is our Workforce Education Coordinator, uh, Becky Tattersall, who is our Business Manager, uh, Sandy Redding, who was our Office Manager. Um, and I see, and it looks like Meg Hansinger, the Assistant Director, she's letting herself in now, so. That's who's with us today at the meeting. I'd like to thank you all for joining in this, uh, very different time in which we're, we're all living, uh. It's certainly different, that's for sure, and, uh, so I, I do appreciate the flexibility and I'm really glad we got on today pretty easily, and, uh, I think we're gonna have a successful meeting, so that's, that's good. Um, it's nice to see everyone's face. So, I'm gonna start with the election of, uh, the Chair. Uh, so, if I could have nominations from the floor, uh, for Chairperson of the RGV Board.
I'd like to nominate-
Yeah, this is Mike Munson, I'd like to nominate John McDonald for Chairperson.
I'll second that, cause Leon.
This is Jac- this is Jackie Kelly.
I'd like to nominate Ed Laterno.
I'd like to second-
Just one second, please. I have a, a motion for John McDonald and a second by Leon and a motion from Jackie Kelly for-
Oh, well, I seconded somebody else's, uh, nomination for Ed Laterno.
Okay.
I nominated Ed Laterno, Fran Kenny.
Okay, Fran, thank you, Fran. Are there any other nominations?
Move nominations closed.
Okay, nominations closed, so to be clear, we have a nomination for, uh, for John McDonald as Chair, seconded by Leon, and we have a motion for Ed Laterno, uh, for Chair, seconded by Jackie. So, as indicated in my email, um, we'll do a roll call, uh, on, on those. I'm just getting some paperwork together here. So, I'm gonna go down, uh, down the list as a roll call style. If you could just cast your vote that way, um, I will mark it down and then we'll go over there. Uh, John Gothier.
John McDonald.
Uh, Leon Johnson.
Leon McDonald.
Jackie Kelly.
Ed Laterno.
Fran Kenny.
Ed Laterno.
John McDonald.
John McDonald.
Uh, Mike Munson.
John McDonald.
Ken Swirad.
John McDonald.
Todd Secleary.
John McDonald.
Dane Whitman.
John McDonald.
That's seven votes for John McDonald. Two votes for Ed Laterno. Excuse me, Ed?
Yes.
That tallies ten votes, which is the number of board members present, so, seven for John McDonald, three for Ed Laterno, uh, John McDonald is elected Chair. Mister Chairman, do you want me to, to run the rest of the election, or do you wanna take over from here?
You, you can go ahead, Michael, thank you.
Okay. Uh, next will be the election of Vice Chair. We're gonna take nominations for Vice Chair.
I would like to-
Mike Munson. Mike Munson.
I'll second that, Leon.
Okay, so we have a, Mike Munson by John McDonald.
I'll nominate Jackie Kelly.
Okay.
And a second by Leon.
Yes, Mike Munson seconded by Leon.
Yep.
We have Ed Laterno is nominating Jackie Kelly. Is there a second for Jackie Kelly?
I'll second up.
Second by Fran. Any other nominations?
Move nominations be closed.
Nominations are closed. To be clear, we have a nomination by John McDonald for Mike Munson for Vice Chair, seconded by Leon Johnson. We also have, uh, a motion made by Ed Laterno for Jackie Kelly for Vice Chair, seconded by Fran. We'll do the same roll call style that we did for the Chair, I'm just doing the paperwork here on the side. Okay, John Gothier.
Mike Munson.
Leon Johnson.
Mike Munson.
Jackie Kelly.
Jackie Kelly.
Fran Kenny.
Uh, Jackie Kelly.
Ed Laterno.
Jackie Kelly.
John McDonald.
Mike Munson.
Mike Munson.
Self.
Uh, Ken Swirad.
Mike Munson.
Todd Secleary.
Mike Munson.
Dane Whitman.
Uh, Jackie Kelly.
That's six votes for Mike Munson for Vice Chair and four votes for Jackie Kelly. That's a total of ten votes, which represent all board members present. So, uh, Mike Munson has been vot- voted as Vice Chair. Next, we have Clerk. Uh, we'll follow the same process.
Jackie Kelly.
Seconded by Laterno.
A nomination by John McDonald for Jackie Kelly for Clerk, seconded by Ed Laterno. Any other nominations?
Move nominations be closed.
Nominations are closed. All those in favor of Jackie Kelly for, uh, Clerk, just raise your hand and say aye.
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 Looks unanimous, okay. So, to recap, we have, uh, John McDonald as been elected Chairman, Mike Munson as Vice Chairman, and Jackie Kelly reelected as Clerk. The next order of business, um, on our, on our agenda, is to set meeting date, times, locations, and committee assignments. John, do you wanna take over, or you want me to keep going?
Uh, you can keep going for a while.
Okay. Uh, so in your, if you did get a packet in the mail, I know that Sandy sent them out and some did not get delivered in time. Uh, it seems like the mail's slower than usual these days. Um, uh, or in your electronic packet, there are the, uh, meeting dates, uh, that we've set. Uh, generally, they are the second Monday of the month, uh, at six o'clock, and they're generally held in the CDC Assembly Room. Um, that's the schedule we've set. Uh, I do know that in this foreseeable future, our meetings will likely be here on Zoom, they will not be in, in, in the Assembly Room. Um, you know, school is closed, the remainder of the school year, and the governor's order for stay home is still in effect till May fifteenth. So, um, I would recommend that we had, certainly have conversation about this and adopt it, knowing that it could change the location wise, so, uh, I'll take conversation from the floor, uh, on that.
This is Laterno, I don't believe we have an option at this point, except to continue as we have.
I would agree, Ed.
I would move the seconds, uh, Tuesday of the month, six o'clock at the CDC Center.
And, uh, I'd like to recommend that when we, when we have a choice between a pr- and a, a third, let me see. So, like, uh, the twelfth is the, uh, and because the holiday is the twelfth, uh, we go to either the fifth or the nineteenth. Um, then I think the ni- the second, the second number is better, the nineteenth rather than the fifth, instead of the first week, the third week.
Okay.
I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but it seems like the first week is very busy of the month.
Well, the first week I have already taken for SVSU policy meeting every month.
Yes.
I will say that, uh, third Monday of every month is the Town Democrats', uh, Party Meeting, uh, which I'm chair of, um, so maybe need to be absent or maybe adjust the time accordingly. Um, that's not the hardest thing to just, uh, maybe bump the meeting an hour later or something like that. But just, um, uh, notice ahead of time would be appreciated.
Dane, what time is the Democratic meeting?
Typically, six PM.
Oh, okay, so one of us has jumped to seven, huh?
And we can, you know, we can also look at, as we get into the fall, um, we can always adjust the dates, you know, as we do is, with a, with a month notice for so, for folks, if we can, we can make it any, really any week of the, of the month, quite frankly, um, if we need to, so.
We'll make it work.
Okay. So, do we wanna, uh, adopt the meeting dates as proposed, um, for, for six PM at the CDC, um, one, one few circumstances clear up?
Yes.
So moved, yes.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, that looks, sounds and looks unanimous. The next order, uh, or agenda item is to set our paper of record. Uh, we have to set a paper of record to put our meeting warnings in, uh, and historically, that has been the Bennington Banner.
I'll motion that, Leon.
And second?
Okay, motion made by Leon, seconded by Jackie to, uh, keep the Bennington Banner as our paper of record.
Good, Mike. Mike, do you think you could, you could also make sure that the information is sent to the Manchester Journal, because we have a lot of people that could be interested up in the Manchester area?
Yes, I could certainly make sure that, uh, we ask for it to put in the Manchester Journal. Uh, we could also put it in the Vermont News Guide, if that's something you-
Oh, good, very good, very good.
Alright, all those in favor, I don't know if I took the call or not?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Alright, the next item is the off-warrant signers, um, for members of the Board who are new, uh, or the public who are listening. We run two warrants a month, uh, a lot of districts only run one warrant a month, but we do two. And historically, someone from the Board has to come in and sign off on that, that payroll and vendor warrant. And in the past, those three signers have been the, uh, the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Clerk. Uh, that has been past practice, and, um, so that's what I'm asking that we do, uh, to have three off-warrant signers, which would be the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Clerk.
So moved. Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Like the ayes have it. Okay, the next item, uh, from the agenda is the School Board Code of Ethics. Um, that is in your Dropbox and in your paper packet. Um, that'll have to be so- signed when we're all back in person at some point, but I would just want you to take a look and acknowledge it. Um, that is from the Vermont School Boards Association, something that we, we give out each year for folks to look at, um, and review, and we usually have a sign off on it, so, um, if you could just acknowledge that you, uh, have seen that and, uh, and will take a look at it, that would be great.
Yep, no problem.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, Mike, this is John, um, the, if we just send back an email saying that we acknowledge and agree, would that count as a signature if that was filed with it?
That would be totally fine, yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's how we're operating a lot nowadays at school, is on, uh, email and Zoom meetings and, uh, digital signature, so.
Yep.
Uh, that will be fine. Okay, that is the, uh, introduction of board members and reorganization section of the agenda. Um, John, do you wanna take over from here?
Sure, Mike, thank you. Uh, the first item on the agenda for, would be the minutes of the meeting for January thirteenth for the full Board meeting. Uh, that I believe is in your packet as well. So moved.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Yep, move by the second, this is John.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, uh, the minutes from the annual meeting, Monday, March second, in twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, the payroll wise, uh, for this meeting are, uh, warrants number eighteen, number ten thirty-three, number ten twenty-nine, number ten thirty-one, number ten thirty-six, number ten thirty-seven, and number ten forty.
I'll move them. Second.
Any discussions?
I have a question. I looked at the warrants online and everything that was placed online was not signed by any, any authorized person. Is there an issue with sweep law and that?
Uh, Be- Becky's, Becky, can you answer that for us?
I can answer that, we did have the off-sign, off-signer, I believe Jackie, most of the time, if not all the time, did come in and sign it. Um, what was uploaded was our copy without the signature, just to protect her signature, but they all have been signed by a signer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Becky.
Any other discussion? Nope. All in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I, I have a, a question or, or a suggestion. Uh, so when I go in to sign these things, it might be nice if it's distributed, since we're, we're he- we're all off, you know, not, not together and not looking at these things together. I'm the only one who sees them until the meeting happens, because there's two, there's one for the meeting and there's one off. And so, uh, my suggestion is, the off one, uh, should be distributed to everyone, so that when I go in to sign it, I'm signing it for everyone, because everyone has seen it. Is that possible?
Uh, this is, this is Leon, I, they, they, the idea of signing is that you is, is doing that until the Board have an opportunity to do a full vote for that, not that you go in to sign it, when you sign it and say that it's approved by the whole Board at the time, it still needs to come before the Board to be voted on, even though you signed ahead of time.
Okay. Thank you.
I think, Jackie, were you looking for someone else to, to review them and say, I, what is this item?
Well, yes, uh, that would be good, to have two heads instead of one. But, uh, it, as Leon points out, that when we meet together, or right, like right now, everyone has a, an opportunity to review them, but, uh, the checks are issued because of the ti- timeliness of when we have to issue checks.
Further discussion? That we, all in favor of the, that, accepting the payroll warrants is-
Aye.
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 And the vendor warrants then? Vendor warrants, number ten thirty, ten thirty-two, ten thirty-four, ten thirty-five, and ten thirty.
I have a, a question. And this is, if, if, is that okay, John?
Yeah, go right ahead.
There, there's something missing. The general public that needs to see these particular items can't see them according to how we're holding the meeting. And normally, what would need to happen is someone that's cheering part of the committee will just flash the, will share the documents, so that the public can see it, so if we had people from the public logged in here, which we do have the banner and somebody else on, they can actually see the document for open meeting purposes, to say, yes, we had an opportunity to see and share at the meeting, even though they may not have gotten the package ahead of time.
Yeah, Le- Leon, if I could address that, um, the, all of these documents are also available on our website, um, www.svcdc.org, uh, under Board and Today's Meeting. Um, all those documents are there, uh, right now and live for everyone to look at, if that's helpful.
Okay.
And, and, uh, I can add that that's how the SVSU publishes their documents as well, on their website.
I'll also, uh, I'll also add that if there's ever a discussion of a document on Zoom, uh, somebody could opt to s- share their screen and show that on the, on the virtual meeting.
Great idea.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
If you wa- if you, uh, would like me to, to share the document on the screen, I can, I can do that, uh, there, there are a lot of them, but I, I, if that's something that you wish, um, you know, that can happen.
I, I would suggest that only if we were, uh, really discussing one document in full, it could be helpful for, for our purposes, but that, um, you don't need to, uh, be sharing every single document on screen before we, before we take a vote or anything like that.
Uh, it could take a long time.
Yeah, I also wanna comment, yeah, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay.
So, do we have a second on those, uh, vendor warrants? Second. All those in favor then of accepting the vendor warrants?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Alright, also enclosed in your packets, uh, a cash flow statement and a revenue and expense statement. As, for information. Are there any questions about either of those documents? Nope. Mike, I don't, do, do we have the bill to accept those as well?
Uh, we nor- we normally do.
We normally, alright, so, um, could I have a motion to-
I'll move them. Second, third.
All those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Uh, com- Committee Reports.
The, um, the, the last committee that met, John, uh, was the Education and, uh, Education and Facilities Committee, uh, just before this whole thing, uh, blew up on us. Uh, and that was a, uh, meeting about our, uh, our school name change. That was the last committee meeting that we had, uh, in my, in my office. So, um, John, and that, that's an action item, John, do you, do you want someone from the Committee to report out on that, or roll it into the, the action item?
Uh, we can roll it into the action item.
Okay.
Uh, it's just as well, I, unless, there's some comments from many of the only people who attended that, uh, meeting that, uh, just know that we, we discussed it for, uh, for a, a bit of time, and there were a number of, of suggestions, but primarily the, um, it was accepted as, uh, by the committee as, uh, presented, uh, after the discussion.
I'd also like to add, uh, that, uh, it's about a name change too, and, and the logo, and most of this was done by students, and, uh, I'd like to, uh, add my comments saying that the, the students did a fantastic job, as well as the professional staff at the school. And, uh, our, uh, we only have accolades for what they did and how they simplified the process.
Thank you, Jackie.
You would agree with that?
Um, I, I was gonna, I'm gonna turn over the, uh, the explanation behind it to, uh, and the work that was put into, over to Nicole, um, our Educational Outreach Community Coordinator, so, Nicole, the floor is yours.
So, this has been something that's been in the works for, um, I would say over a year, wouldn't you agree, Mike?
Yes.
Um, initially, we sent out a survey to, um, um, faculty and staff to ask, um, you know, if a name change were to occur, you know, suggestions, or just kind of like a brainstorming, period, and we've got a lot of things back, and what really, um, we, we boiled it down in the end, instead of like adding more names to what we already have, our district is Southwest Vermont Regional Technical School District, and also, or referred to as the Career Development Center, you know, that's nine words, that's a lot. And when you're, um, talking about, um, branding and getting a message across, um, some people refer to it as the CDC, some, um, Southwest, um, in the state of Vermont, we were also always known as Southwest, um, Career Development Center, so that we were just called Southwest. And what it came down to is trying not to add anything to it, but to simplify it, so our district name will not change, it's Southwest Vermont Regional Technical School District, and what we decided was to, um, truncate it and, um, be referred to and brand ourselves as Southwest Tech. Um, I know in, um, being referred to as the CDC always was kind of like a little, you know, funny thing for everybody, like, cause we would get confused with the CDC. And, um, outside of our- And, um, outside of our, um, Bennington, obviously, um, and it was always a joke and. And now it's kind of not funny to be, um, branded as C D C, um, so, but that's actually just like. Um, so I think we went with Southwest Tech and then we pitched the idea to students and in the, um. Betsy Kane's Graphic Arts Program and all the students treated us, um, as a client and they were taught. Um, how to present their art to us. And explain why they, they picked, um, their design. And we ultimately went with this design, it was very simple and it was presented by Kylie Hall. Um, and she basically, um, did this because she said that the triangles represented. Um, it's the strongest shape there is and she said it also represented, um. The, what did she, what was it, Mike? Do you remember? It was another thing.
The mountains of Vermont?
Yeah, the mountains and then the strength of ours and unity of our school. There we go, thank you. Um. So it's very simple, but it's also, we wanna, you know, be recognized when someone sees this. And I think that we received good feedback within in-house and as well as the committee. And I think we have something really nice to move forward with.
Thank you, Nicole. Yeah, this is, it's been a lot of work that we've put into this and as, as Nicole said in our, in our presentation, uh, to the subcommittee twice. You know, it's not just about a name change, uh, we've been operating as the Career Development Center for fifty years. And, you know, we, we think it's, it's time to, you know, we've changed what we, what we offer at the center, how we offer it. Uh, and the quality of our programs has continued to increase over the years and so. Um, we wanna be known as something new, uh, not, not to get rid of the past, but moving forward. We just think that Southwest Tech has a nice ring to it, um, it's easy to remember. The, the state already causes, calls us Southwest in all their documents to begin with and, um. You know, it was really nice to engage the students in the process. We had a couple ideas about what the design might look like and at the end of the day, we had about eighty ideas about what it should look like. And, uh, the students did a really, really great job, um, presenting to, to us what they, what they thought as. Uh, the logo and there were some suggestions from the committee about changing the color to green from maroon. And, uh, we, and when we put it into green, we actually really liked it, so, um, we've been. We were hoping to be, have us approved at the March meeting because we are still, well, our building's closed, you know, we're still operating. And, uh, we wanna get this rolled out for, um, you know, July first, if you will. We've got vehicles to let her up, we have trucks and we have trailers and we have signs in the building that need to come down. And, you know, there are a lot of things that are gonna go into this. Um, and, you know, we've, we've identified some grant money that's gonna allow us to do this as well, which is a really nice bonus, so. Uh, that just got approved, uh, the end of last week, so, you know, we're, we're, we're kinda ready to go. And now the, the school doors are shuttered for a while, we can actually get this rolled out a lot sooner probably than July first because, um. You know, all, all of our vehicles are sitting idle, um, so it's probably a good time to start, uh, working on some of this stuff, so.
And like Mike said, it's not just a name change, it's also, uh, you know. A message that we wanna put out there and, um, would you like me to read that little caption that we ca- we, um. Came up with?
Yeah, I think that'd be nice.
Okay, so today's students, tomorrow's workforce, Southwest Tech is a technical school that serves Bennington County's economic region. We specialize in high-quality education and advanced technical training. Our instructors are industry-leading professionals that prepare students for college, career, and community.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Nicole. Yeah, so I'm, I, I'm asking for the, the board to, uh, of- officially adopt this, if they will today. Um, uh, dropping the, the name Career Development Center and going by Southwest Tech. Which is an abbreviation of our district name, which is Southwest Vermont Regional Technical School District.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second.
Are we also adopting the logo and, uh, mission statement?
Yes.
Everything.
Yes, thank you. It's a package.
Right.
Yes, it's a whole deal.
Well, we have a motion and a second and discussion that is taking place, so, uh, can we have a vote, please? All in favor? It appears unanimous.
We could add that originally the, the name Career Development Center was created when the school was part of Mount Anthony. And the object was to distinguish the old vocational department of Mount Anthony as a new school.
Thank, thank you, Ed.
The next, uh, um, item on the, in the action agenda then is, uh, the adoption of, uh. Uh, warrant policies. Uh, Leon, do you wanna just take us through that?
No, the, the, uh.
Alright, I can, alright, so.
You, you got him on that, yeah, I didn't, I didn't bring him up to share to be able to, to see them out here for that.
The policies are on the use of school facilities, which is C ten ninety. Um, access control, which is C thirty-three hundred. And secu- the use of security cameras, which is C thirty-three ten.
Right.
Those individually, this, uh, use of school facilities. Is there any discussion with regard to that?
I have one question.
Sure.
For an organization to, to use a school facility. We require a million dollars in a liability policy, is that? Authorized in state law, cause I think it's kinda high for some organizations that we might want on campus.
No, I, I think that's a standard, uh. Requirement for use of the school facility and what we said we needed to have for them, I mean, we. We can try lowering things down, but we, you, uh, put the school at risk. And so if anybody is wanting to use a school facility, they need to have enough coverage. Uh, to make sure that, uh, we are not, uh, being here liable for something that they may not have enough. Coverage for, if it takes place.
Yeah, this is, um, that on, that Leon there, you know, that is very, very standard and. You know, any company basically that does business these days has, has just that. The c- the cost of that insurance is less than a thousand dollars a year for most businesses.
Further discussion? Can we have a motion, please? I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Or the use of schools facility policy, uh, vote to accept?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous. The second policy then is the, uh, access control, uh. That's the, uh, the lock system and the, um, and all of those, uh. Things that are connected to that, that entrance to the front door, the back door and all of those. Um, kinds of things and that's basically prescribed, um. It's basically prescribed that, that, you know, we have that facility, a silver, uh, building, so.
That, that's correct. These are, we, that's a new piece of our policy and, uh, to make sure that we have all the, the I's, uh. Dotted and, uh, T's crossed when it comes to, uh, securing the dealer.
Can we get a motion?
I move to accept.
Motion to accept policies number C thirty-three hundred? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? So move there, or so, yeah, uh, can finally, um. C thirty-three ten, which is the use of, uh, security cameras within. And, and outside the, uh, building for, again, for the protection of the students and, and the facility. Leon, anything else to add to that?
Well, this is, this is again, a, a new one that, that we're bringing forth. And one of the things that we wanted to make sure we have control of who's getting access to videos. And things that we have in the school and make, make the public aware of the fact that we, uh. Looking at those particular things in terms of how we share that information.
Further discussion? Can I have a motion, please? So most.
I'll move.
In a second? Second then. Motion to, um, uh, for vote to accept C thirty-three ten. The security, uh, camera, um, policy, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? It's passed and, uh, Michael, it's, looks like you're next on the agenda, your superintendent's report.
Well, I have nothing to report at all, I don't, I'm just kidding, okay?
Did we forget the, uh, treasures report, Mike?
Um.
I thought that was up front.
I'm looking.
I don't remember it being brought out, the treasures report, there's two of them.
Mike, we did, we did cover it, it was labeled though as cash flow and revenue and expenses. Instead of treasures.
Sorry, no, I, I'm off that.
Thanks, Becky. Um, I am gonna turn over the beginning of my superintendent's report, um, to, uh, to Rob. Uh, to just give an update about, uh, adult education and then I'm gonna update you on the, the rest of what's been going on since March fifteenth, so. Um, Rob, it's, the floor is yours.
You're muted, Rob. Rob, you're muted.
There he is.
I know, I had to tell my kids to be quiet for a minute. They're actually sitting very nicely doing clay creations at the kitchen table, but. Yeah, so adult edu- adult workforce and adult education, uh, we. Have indefinitely postponed all programs that were scheduled for the spring except for two. Um, the E M T class is still running, uh, online through the Bennington Rescue Squad. Uh, so that is still progressing and seems to be going just fine. Uh, we are also planning on starting our next L N A cohort, uh, virtually. Uh, that is going to start, uh, this coming Monday, um, if all goes as planned, uh, the. Vermont Board of Nursing has made concessions, um, to allow this to continue, these programs to continue online since there's such a high need. Uh, for L N As in communities across the state, um, so we are working to get this program, uh, ready to go for, uh, this coming Monday. Uh, online, so, um, it will probably be a busy fall. Uh, but probably a busy twenty twenty-one for workforce and adult education, there's gonna be a lot of people who. My guess is a lot of people who are not returning to the job they had before, even when the, even when this passes by. Um, and there're gonna be quite a few people who are gonna need to get retrained, uh, for other jobs in the community, so, um, I am planning and anticipating. Uh, a busy year starting in September. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Back to you, Michael.
Sorry, I was having a technical, I lost my mouse, alright, now I'm back. So, yeah, I actually have quite a, quite a bit to talk to you about, um, as you can imagine, um. The flow of information from the Agency of Education has been, um, daunting a- at best, um, you know, this is a. A whole new world for all of us and it all happened very, very quickly, um, from, um, the governor's declaration. On March fifteenth that schools would be, uh, closed for instruction for two weeks. Um, and then moved to, you know, shortly thereafter for the remainder of the school year, um. I will say the Agency of Education has been very good at getting us information, um, as it comes down every day. Um, there are literally, uh, at least one, sometimes two updates from the Agency of Education. Uh, giving us guidance on everything from attendance, um, to technical assistance, special ed requirements, technology. Food service, um, you know, all the school services, counseling, uh, you name it, everything that has to happen in our. In our building, in our district in a day, and how do we do that now when the doors are closed? Um, sort of walking through kind of the process that we've been, uh, through. Uh, on March fifteenth, when the governor ordered schools closed for two weeks, um. Your team immediately put into place a, a learning plan for students, uh, we spent, we spent two full days getting it ready. And rolling it out to faculty and staff, um, with the information which we had at the time. And so, so, attendance was pretty, pretty. Uh, uh, got a lot of feedback, I'm gonna mute everybody just for a second. There. Uh, so, we.
It would help if everybody muted except for Michael.
Yeah, I just muted everybody.
Okay, thanks.
Hopefully that'll help, um, so, uh, we started on March fifteenth, like I said, attendance was not. Uh, very good on March fifteenth and sixteenth, Monday and Tuesday, uh, because students did not have to come to school those two days, it was optional. And so we struggled with a pretty low attendance rate on those two days. And as you all watched, um, you know, as that week evolved, things continued to go downhill really quickly, quite frankly. Um, with, with the health system, um, and the em- emerging then of this COVID nineteen, um, virus. We started off with, um, the office being open and staffed every day, um. To rotating it down to, to a skeleton crew for limited hours, uh, to wind it down to now the building's closed essentially. Um, people are allowed in the building, employees only, um, from the hours of eight to one, Monday through Friday. Uh, but with limited access, you know, there's no more than one or two people in the building at the ti- at a time. Um, and that's how it stands as of right now. Um, will the building be, you know, permanently shut down to, to faculty and staff? I don't know yet. Um, it, it may be, um, the way things continue to go, I, I don't know. Um, some teachers find it, you know, helpful to come into the building to get materials, to provide or. Prepare lessons for students, you know, which we're transitioning to, um, remote learning. And, you know, I wanna emphasize remote learning does not mean a hundred percent online learning, that is not possible for all of our students and. We certainly can't replicate, um, our labs, you know, and in a home setting. Um, our teachers are doing the best that they can and I, I'm very impressed with the way that we've been able to turn our instruction around on a dime, basically. Um, and be prepared for the next phase of education. So, um, the first two weeks of the school closure, um, the A O E made a determination that schoolwork was. Optional and not required during those two weeks and that there should be no new learning happening, it was just, it was called continuity of learning. Um, so review materials, et cetera, um, that made it very challenging for us. Um, for students who were not engaged in the process because they, you know. Understood they didn't have to do it, that it was optional, although we did have pretty good participation for the two, for the, the two weeks. Um, some programs had a hundred percent participation, uh, as we started with, um, meetings such as, such as this with Zoom. Uh, in Google Classroom, uh, and other, uh, learning platforms that we have in the building, um. So, beyond the two-week period, uh, which for us starts April twentieth, so this is school break this week. Um, so school is officially, you know, not in session this week, we're following the school calendar as directed by the Agency of Education. And so April twentieth, which is a week from today, is when, you know, the full. Full remote learning experience goes into place, um, where there will be attendance accountability and the requirement to complete work. Um, of students and so, we really took the, the two and a half, three-week period and, you know, used as a trial period. Um, to see who could get connected, you know, what resources worked for us, what resources didn't work for us. Um, and also really coordinating that, trying to coordinate that with all of our sending schools, which you can imagine. which you can imagine is really, uh, you know, been difficult. Um, uh, they've all been great to work with, but trying to fit, you know, distance learning into a school day, when you've got six different districts to fit that into, it's kind of tough. Um, but we are, I feel very confident in the plan that we have put together. Um, we were required to submit uh last week what's called a continuity of education plan uh to the Agency of Education and they provided the template for us and uh, you know, it was about, ended up being about an eight-page plan and that includes things, uh like I mentioned, about accountability, uh remote access, um att- attendance procedures, how we communicate with students, how we keep the staff connected, how staff connects with students, how students connect with staff, how we provide the services um while our doors are closed, you know, doing, in the best effort that we can. Um, and we continue to receive guidance, again da- daily um from the Agency of Education uh on those plans. I don't have the plan to share with you today. Uh, it has not been approved yet by the A O E. Um, it's been received and acknowledged and I don't expect it not to be approved, uh but it's not a public document yet. Um, as soon as they give us the, uh the blessing or the tweaks to it and will make them, um that continuity of learning plan will be made available um to, of course, the board and to the public uh via our, our website. Um, you'll also notice on our website, we have a new tab, like a lot of school districts do, it's labeled COVID-nineteen resources and we are trying to put information in there that's helpful uh to both families, uh students and the community, uh including letters that I have sent home uh on behalf of the district to, to students and to faculty and staff and community members. Um, there's a lot of information overload right now and what we're trying to do is not overload people with extra information. Um, there are a lot of resources out there. Um, and that's been my challenge is, you know, try not to overwhelm the faculty and staff with, um, you know, nine or ten emails each day. They just can't keep up on it. I, I mean, my in, my inbox, I, I probably have a hundred and fifty messages a day that come in um from staff members and, you know, A O E and um different divisions and i- it's really hard to keep up on, uh quite frankly. And so I'm trying to limit that for the faculty and staff so they can focus on preparing their lessons um and shifting the way they think about teaching to be something entirely different. Um, every teacher has already uh taken uh a three-hour uh course at the Ver- uh V T V L C, which is the Vermont Virtual Learning Cooperative, on getting up to speed on online teaching and online learning. Um, I wanna give you some examples of things that our teachers have done um to, to replicate what they can from the classroom. Um, I don't wanna call anybody out, I'm just thinking about things that we've talked about. Uh, some teachers have created a, a YouTube channel uh and they, you know, they're, they're cooking from their kitchen. And some, some uh programs have put uh packets together, and I don't mean paper packets, I mean digital packets, um included computers and video cameras and, and cards and wires and cords, you name it, uh to send things home. Uh, AutoProgram has put out um their e- electronic uh testing kits that have gone home. You know, Forest Read, I know Dave is making videos and, and, you know, Brian's doing the same thing and Building Trades. And every program's doing a little bit something different in this really strange time um for us. And I really can't stress to everyone who's listening on the call today enough of how impressed I am uh with our teachers and staff who have really done an outstanding job of, you know, being thrown their face uh on March fifteenth, like, hey, we're closing in a couple of days, you gotta figure this out. Um, and of course, we gave them the tools to do that, but this is, this is something, there's, there's no playbook for this, right? Like, no one's ever planned for this, um particularly with, in a, in a two-day time stretch, you know, to, how, how do we shift to teaching online within two days? Um, I mean, that's just unheard of, quite frankly. And so, you know, I think that out of all the negative of, of all this, I think that we, it's forced us to, you know, try to do something even differently again um with having classes that could be hybrid, you know, um with an online component uh or a distant component. And, you know, but I will tell you that for those who have taken online classes or um have done this type of distance meeting, number one, it's very tiring, um it is very taxing on the, on the brain, that's for sure. And it's a different level of engagement. Um, you know, I'll tell you that from a, from a faculty and staff perspective, um we meet all the time uh as a group on this very platform. And I think that those meetings go very successfully. We have a great order in place um and people have a lot of feedback to give us. Um, because we all got in the education system to be, to work with people, right? Work with students, whether they're in ninth grade or they're an adult student. And I tell you, it's, as you're all experiencing, for us not being in our workplace, uh it's very difficult for all of us. Uh, and very different, you know, of being a day or two, or if on a vacation for a week, that's nice. But this has not been vacation by any stretch of the imagination. Um, it's been very taxing for, for your faculty and staff um and all of us. Not that we're not getting through it, but it's very different um for us. And I think that, you know, getting together is very important for us to see each other virtually and talk. Um, one of the things that I do weekly is I have open office hours, uh just like I do it at school. I have a Zoom meeting like this that's open, you know, only the faculty have the invite and uh we set up protocols to let, to let them in and they pop in and they, and they see me. And we ha- we talk and ask questions and have one-on-one meetings, just like we would in the office, you know, as normal as we, as we can. Um, and most people take advantage of that. Uh, we also have weekly scheduled faculty meetings. Uh, that is for everybody. That's our, that's our support staff, uh our office staff and our teachers. Everyone's invited to those meetings and, and everyone attends uh and ask questions. And so, um, for, there've been a lot of questions about graduation and about end-of-year ceremonies and um credits and things like that. And I can only tell you what I know at this point. I uh, I know that by May eighth, the Secretary of Education um is gonna make a determination about events for the end of the school year, such as graduation gatherings uh and things like that. Um, you know, is there any talk about holding kids back or not allowing graduation? No, I've not seen any of that. Uh, it's more about will there be gatherings at the end of the school year? And, you know, I can't tell you if that's gonna happen any more than anyone else on this call can tell, can, can make that guess. Um, but by May eighth, um the secretary again is supposed to make a decision on those end-of-year gatherings. Um, you, you know, our attendance, the attendance for, for students is gonna be a little bit different. We're used to doing period attendance or block attendance and um attendance will now shift to daily attendance um for us. And the Agency of Education has defined daily attendance is that if a student checks in uh with their instructor that day, logs into the classroom, does some sort of, of work, uh they are considered present for that day. Um, and that's a little bit different than what we're op- have operated on, uh obviously before. Um, but this is a different world we're, we're living in. So that's a directive from the Agency of Education on, on attendance. Um, and we have a good system set up for that uh through our Google Classroom and uh Google Sheets. We have a, I think we have a pretty effective system put in place for teachers um to take daily attendance now rather than period attendance uh and send that to our attendance uh person in the, in the virtual office because obviously they're also not in the school. Um, we've given the ability for all of our staff and faculty to work remotely, uh and that's what they are doing. Uh, everyone has the ability uh to work remotely with either a district-issued device. Um, everyone has district-issued Zoom accounts so that they can create um their own meetings. There's been a lot of scrutiny in the media lately about Zoom, about Microsoft Teams, about what, you pick the platform, none of them are perfect. They all have their, their own issues. And so we have taken the recommended guidance from the Agency of Education um as well as best practices from, from Zoom uh and the A O E about securing these meetings as, as much as possible. Um, you've probably heard of some nightmare stories of these meetings getting Zoom bombed by, you know, inappropriate images or, or things like that. Um, so as you noticed today, uh when you came into the meeting, you had to be allowed into the meeting. There, you were put in a, in a waiting room, it's called, um and you were admitted one by one. And so um that's just an, an example of something that we've changed so that there is limited access or the organizer has more control of who they're allowed into their meeting or in this case, allowed into their classroom, if you think of it in that respect. Um, also by default, although I changed it for today's meeting, um the video feed um from all student accounts are turned off by default. Um, so only they have the option to turn them on because there are, you know, some, there are privacy issues um considering, you know, the background and, and all the things we never thought about before, really. So uh we do have, you know, the controls in place uh a- as much as possible and we'll continue to tweak those, you know, to avoid a- as many security holes as we can. Um, but, you know, it doesn't matter what platform we pick, they, again, they all have some issues. So, you know, none of them are perfect at all. Um, so I am, that's what I know uh right now. It could change tomorrow, quite frankly. Um, you know, all of our students are ready to go for the twentieth. All of our programs have lesson plans. They are on Google Classroom. They've already all been meeting on Zoom. Um, I've actually popped in and done virtual classroom walkthroughs uh with, with teachers during the um these last two and a half weeks or so. Uh, and, you know, trying to normalize as much as we can the school day um in this very abnormal situation. Uh, you know, in a regular school day, it'd be very normal for Meg or myself or Rob or Nicole to pop in or any of us to pop into a, a classroom to say, hey, what's going on or, you know, o- operating the school day. And we don't obviously have that luxury anymore. And so having the ability to, to at least pop in and say hello, you know, to some kids and, and classes is, is helpful. But I'll, I'll tell you, it certainly doesn't replace the, the in-person instruction. And, you know, no one here that's here in this meeting today, as our staff, would tell you that we're trying to replicate and replace classroom instruction and lab instruction. We're, we just can't physically do that. Um, the, you know, the, the good news about all this is that if you think about it, we only have six weeks of instruction left for the school year. Um, you know, luckily this didn't occur back in the fall or, you know, in e- early, early winter and we'd be talking about, you know, three semesters worth of learning. We're, we're talking about six weeks. Um, which is very important, six weeks. I don't wanna downplay that. Um, but it's not like we're planning for, you know, the, the next year of remote instruction, you know, I, I, like everyone else, I hope that we're back in the fall, um, you know, in our, in our building with our students. Uh, but I, I, I can't predict that nor can anyone else until we're kind of given, you know, how the health situation settles down and what that looks like for everybody. You know, this is exceptionally tough on our students. Um, most of the students, school's the best part of their day and they love coming to school. They love seeing us for the most part. And uh, you know, we, and we enjoy seeing them. And it's uh, you know, it's, 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 they're, they're the ones that are really suffering out of all this, you know, it's uh not being able to connect with people socially. Uh, and school's a very social place, you know, if you've been in them, um you know, it's, it's, it's the heartbeat of what we do. Um, so it's, it's very strange, that, that I can tell you. Um, but I am also very confident in the plans that we have put forward um for our staff and our students to be able to complete this school year um as best as possible, given the circumstances. Um, and I think that's all that we can do. So I'm going to um open it up for questions and like I do at the faculty meeting. If you have questions or comments, if you could raise your hand or speak up and uh I will uh, I'll call on you. I see Jackie and uh, and then I'll, and then we'll go from there. Alright. Jackie.
Okay, I'm gonna, oh, I'm unmuted. Uh, I'd like to ask about awards. You know, at the end of the year, we've always had awards banquet and it was kind of a highlight for many students and they got some money for going on for their education. So wh- what are the plans for that or have you thought about that yet?
Um, great question. We have thought about that. You know, we, we are fairly certain we're not gonna be able to have a gathering and that's probably a, a reality. Um, but we uh, we still plan on giving out our scholarships and uh giving our student awards. Uh, even if, you know, it's, we've talked about, maybe we're mailing them home, you know, with certificates and plaques and, and a, and a recommendation. Uh, some, some virtual event, you know, we, we, we are talking about it and uh, you know, we're not, we're not just gonna cast it off to the side. Uh, there's, like I said, there'll still be scholarships and awards. Uh, what it looks like yet, though, I, I don't know.
Thank you. Mike?
Yep.
Is there any guidance from A O E yet on kids that need a certain number of hours to get a license? In the end, for example, cosmetology?
Um, so the best answer I can, I can give you, Ed, is that um once April twentieth starts up, it starts up for school again, those are considered school days um and they are in session. And it's my understanding that hours that the students work will count towards those um, towards those certifications, if you will. Um, you know, the whole, the whole country's dealing with this. Obviously, it's not just a Vermont issue. And so there seems like there's gonna be a lot of flexibility around, you know, completion of programs and completion of those certificates.
Yeah, I brought that up because I was asked by people that are out there in the public.
Yeah, it's a, it is a concern, um but I, I think that we'll be able to, you know, uh mitigate that as time goes on. Uh, John McDonald.
Yeah, uh. I just wanted to let you know, early on, before things clamped down as tight as they are now, I had run into a couple of faculty members and I just wanted to let you know that they felt the, the support of you and the, and the office staff and so forth uh right from the beginning. It felt like they were ready uh when uh, when, when things came because of the preparation that you guys had done and, and the work you'd done with them. So you and your staff in the office and so forth um ought to be uh recognized for the hard work you've done uh to get your, your faculty as, as comfortable as they are. But I just wanted to thank you for that.
Uh, thank you, John. You know, it takes, it takes a, a whole team to make this stuff happen, uh that's for sure. And uh, you know, I, we, I, I think that we at the Tech Center are really good about pulling together when, when we need to. Uh, we always do, quite frankly, but um it seems like in this, you know, emergent crisis, we really were able to help support the staff, I think, um as best as possible. And I, I do feel very satisfied in that.
And, and one other thing, that's uh, it, it sounds like uh that you feel that same energy coming back from the faculty that, that you put into the, um, that you put into them with regard to their participation and so forth. So that's, that's also a good thing and it needs to be recognized as well.
Thank you, John. Um, uh Meg and then Dane. Hey, Meg.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Um, I just wanted, um, this is kind of going off of what John said. I just want it placed on record, the tremendous job that Mike has done, um particularly his consistent communication with faculty and staff. Um, and that does a couple of things. It, it increases morale, um it decreases worry, I think. Um, it also increases the energy and focus um of faculty and staff. Um, he has been able to um also provide adult interaction which helps teachers, faculty and staff um problem solve together. Um, and, you know, I think, like Mike said, school for kids is the most important part of their day. But um we also wanna recognize the fact that, you know, as educators, we go into the field um with the assumption we're gonna be, you know, uh having one-on-one interactions or small group interactions with kids. So um the weekly faculty meetings, I think, have been really helpful in providing that time for faculty and staff, just to even check in with each other to say, hey, how are things going? Um, you know, and um he's also been able to set the tone for staff um, um that the admin staff that were, were here for them. Um, and that can only be done, I think, through consistent communication with um, with faculty and staff. He's, he's used the admin and office staff to coordinate and brainstorm ideas around um how to document our transition um to remote learning, which, you know, is obviously necessary um in, in order to move forward. Um, he's also, like he said, he's had um individual meetings or we've had individual meetings with teachers. Um, and he's, he's been holding office hours. So um I, I just wanna make sure it's on record that um I appreciate it. I know that the faculty and staff have appreciated this and um I feel like we are stronger for it. I feel like um we are having some really great conversations. Um, and, and it's also allowing an opportunity to. Um, and and it's also allowing an opportunity to maybe think about. Uh, remote learning in areas that that, you know, we necessarily have not had to think of it, um. Um, in that way, so I just want to thank Mike for his leadership. Um, and uh for the support that he has provided, both the admin staff as well as faculty and staff.
Uh, thank you, Meg, very much. Uh, Da- Dane.
Uh, there you go. Yeah, thank you, Mike, for everything that you're doing, and thanks for the report, and thanks to all of the staff and faculty for. Uh, keeping up with things as they're changing every day, um, I just wanted to ask, are there any, uh, in-person workers as far as. Uh, custodial maintenance, uh, taking place at uh this career development center still or at the building?
Yeah, there there is a skeleton crew, um, you know, we we contract our services for ma- maintenance through M A U because we are joined at the building. Um, so, uh, but there there is a small crew there working, yes, um. There are, like I said, some teachers that come into the building, I can think of two or three that that come in to try to do their instruction from their classroom. Uh, but they come in from their own exterior door, they stay in their classroom and they leave that, you know, they're they're not wandering through the building. Um, as you probably saw, uh, on the, uh, the banner did a nice article. Uh, our manufacturing program is has been making, uh, three D printed masks, um, for for the community. Shields, I should say, not mask, shields, face shields, um, yes, we can only produce so many a day, um, but we've we've cranked out about two hundred and fifty of them. Uh, I say, A- Adam has done that, uh, and and Meg's been helping with that, she was helping find materials and, you know, we're kind of scrounging things together. You know, and the thing is, we're going to run out of material shortly anyway, um, but I think that, you know, the fact that we were able to provide two, two hundred and fifty plus. You know, face shields to to the community, well, that's great, you know, um. And Adam, Adam and I met last week and he said, how long do you want me to keep making these floor? And I said, well, till you're out of material, you know, till we can't get it anymore, and then that's about it, you know, and that's, and we're, we're getting there, we're just about out of material. At this point, and, you know, the stuff's pretty hard to come by, quite frankly, so. Um, we we were lucky that we didn't really have to buy much, we had a lot of stuff laying around that could that could make them, um, you know. And we already had all the three D material uh for the printers, because we were up and running, right, full time, and, uh, the rest of the materials. We, uh, we found locally, some of it we had in the uh M A U's uh old sewing shop, I mean, we really scrounged stuff together, so. Um, yeah, it's been a a nice effort, that's for sure.
Yeah, that that sounded like a fantastic project, so so thank you for keeping up with that.
Yes, I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, I think I was just wondering if it's a, just a small group of maybe one or two, uh, people that are also doing M A U as far as, uh. Essential workers, as you might.
Yeah, that that, that's about it.
Thank you.
Uh, Jackie.
Well, I'm, uh, bouncing off what you just said, uh, I'd like to know, since we're we're on public, um, to. Access, uh, I'd like to know if you want us to reach out for more materials for mass, mass making.
Um, yes, if if you have other resources, you know, that you want to ask around, that would be great, um, I just, I just don't know. You know, how much longer will our building be open, you know, depending on how this continues to 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 progress, or, you know, it may be. It may be a point that we can't make them because, you know, we're not going to be in the building at all, um.
Right.
You know, I don't want to, I don't want to promise the community that we can continue to crank them out. Um, or secure a lot of materials and then not be able to fulfill that too, you know, so it's kind of a balancing act, Jackie.
Right, and, uh, so if you could just publish lists, maybe then some people might have them on hand.
Sure, that's a great idea. Other folks.
Uh, on the E S P negotiations, that's on hold, like everything else in the state is at the moment. For teacher negotiations, that has gone to fact finding. And we'll know something someday about where we stand.
Yeah, I don't, um, if, uh, if, Becky, could could you give an update on the, on the, uh, negotiations, if you have any more than what Ed has said?
Yeah, I don't have anything more, um, they are doing the fact finding and will be notified when that is done for teacher negotiations. And again, for the E S P, everything was canceled because of the situation right now. Are basically put on hold, and there's been no notifications at this point, and I guess we're waiting. For, you know, the ability to be able to get back together before that continues.
Thank you, Becky, and I thank you, Ed, for the update on that. Anybody else by show a hand, or I'm going to actually unmute everybody for a second if I don't want to miss anybody, so.
It's more socially interesting, should go on for how much time. Now with any test, there's always a risk of false positive and false negative. These two, positive being falsely alarmed, and false negative being falsely.
All right, sounds like there's some good news report going on somewhere, um, so I've I've put everyone back on mute. Uh, and, uh, if you, uh, if I missed you, I am sorry, uh, but, uh. If we could get a show of hands, um, for a, and I guess, John, I'll I'll let you close the meeting, you're the, you're the chairman, so.
Okay. If y'all here. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, could I have a motion to, uh, end the meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor. Thank you all very much for attending, I appreciate it, and, uh, actually looking forward to the next one.